Ask everyone to rise for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Gillespie, Councilman Wood, Councilman Argo, Councilman Miller, Councilman Reniger, Councilman Bowles, Councilman Fink.
Coram being present, I hereby call this Prattville City Council meeting to order. We are ready to conduct business. We have seven items on our agenda this evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, before we get into our agenda, I will let you know that we are going to be discussing the possibility of going into an executive session at the end of our agenda. We have three economic development projects that we need to meet with the proper officials and our attorney to discuss, and I'm going to ask the council at the completion of our agenda that we talk about the possibility of going into that executive session so that we could have those discussions. Ladies and gentlemen, I also will let you know that our character trait for this month is endurance, the inward strength to withstand stress and to do my best. Members of the council, you should have received your minutes from the public hearing and city council meeting of June 1st, 2010. Hope you found those to be in good order, and if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Move by Councilman Reniger to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Miller. Any discussion, addition, deletions, changes, comments about the minutes? All in favor of approving those minutes will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye, and those minutes will stand approved. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your opportunity to address the city council before we get to our agenda this evening. If there is anyone here that wishes to address the city council, I'm going to ask that you raise your hand. I will call on you, and at that time, would you please come forward to the podium, speak into the microphone, and please give us your name and your address so that we'll have a record of your attendance at tonight's council meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council on any issue? Yes, ma'am. Come right here, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. My name is Deborah Maliska. I live at 1319 Adell Street here in Prattville, and the issue I have is with a dog in our neighborhood. He has attacked three animals, killed one, and last Monday evening, she tried to attack me. We have signed warrants for the man, and nothing's been done, and I'm not going to live in fear in my own house. I have not been able to leave my house, cannot have my grandchildren here until something's done about this dog. Mr. Kent has no idea. He doesn't even care. He locks the dog up. They picked up the dog. The warden, the game, or dog warden, gave her back three hours later. And the law, the ordinance that we have, isn't strong enough. We need to do something better so that all of us can be protected. Thank you.
Before you leave the podium, is there anyone who have any questions or comments? Malus- Maluski?
Maliska.
Maliska. Anyone have any questions or comments? Dr. Miller?
We've talked, we talked actually earlier this afternoon, and we've talked two or three times the last week or two, and I'm real familiar with the situation that the dog owner actually, Councilman Bowles, is in your district. And I've also talked to the mayor, and I anticipate when he gets back in town that we're going to be looking at putting a little bit more study into this issue with the police department, the Humane Shelter, and various folks to see what we can do.
Any other questions or comments? I will let you know that Councilman Bowles and myself have had discussions about a vicious dog ordinance. I have a situation in my district where a small animal was attacked by a next-door neighbor's dog that had dug underneath the fence, caused considerable damage to the dog. Luckily, the dog owner was not hurt, but she did go to small claims court and did prevail. But, as you pointed out, our current ordinance does not, does not go far enough, and that's something that we've got to address.
Well, two years ago, she attacked our little puppy right outside our back door and did about $500 worth of damage to him, and he only weighed six pounds. He's a little Pomeranian. My neighbor's dog was attacked, Mr. and Ms. Pratt's dog was attacked, but when she started coming after me, that's a whole different ballgame. And like I told Mr. Miller, I can't have my grandchildren here this summer because all this is going on and nothing has been concrete done, so we're kind of in limbo ourselves. We can't have our grandchildren here. I'm scared to walk out my back door. And we just have to do something about a vicious animal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maliska. We appreciate that very much. Yes, sir.
Tommy Pratt, I lived at 1300 Cooper Avenue, Prattville. I had some bad experience with that same dog that she was just talking about. On May the 15th, about 4:30, I was carrying my dog for a walk, which I did almost three or four times a day. Small dachshund, had on a leash. I walked out the front door, and I saw this dog coming up the street, and I recognized it as being a vicious dog because there's been talk of the dog attacking other dogs. I turned to bring my dog in the house, and before I could get my dog in the house, that dog was on my front porch chewing on my dog's neck. I reached down and grabbed the dog and threw him out in the street, and if I'd had a gun, I'd shot the hell out of him. But I couldn't get my gun before he got away. The next morning, I had to call the vet and have my dog put down, and I'm mad as heck about it. We, you know, you know, you've got a dog like that out there, and there's nothing you can do. You go to the health department, if you get bit, they'll confine him to see if he's had rabies, but if he kills your dog, it's not anything you can do. Now, it ought to be something done to a dog like that. I don't know, he got in another dogfight that same day, and then he's been out and chased her in a truck. I think it's time to do something about the dog. Now, what can we do to get that dog put down? Is anything you can do other than what we're doing?
Currently, what we're going by, Ms. Nancy, I'll get to you in just a second.
I signed a warrant for him. They had him, they took him, they came down and got him, the owner of the dog, but that's been over a month ago, and nothing's happened on that.
Yes, sir.
And from talking to the chief of police, it's going to be the 15th of July before he even is called into court, and then what, what are they going to do when they call him in court?
Yes, sir. I understand your, I understand your frustration.
You know, it's just not right. It's not safe to walk down the street in that neighborhood with that dog in that possession of that family.
Yes, sir.
Can y'all do something about it?
We're going to do something about it. Mr. Pratt?
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Pratt?
I've got a question. Dave, did the county ever do their vicious dog ordinance? Do you know?
I believe they did.
Can we get a copy of that? Can you get a copy for us?
I already have it.
Good. That was what we were sort of waiting on, was the county to do theirs, and we were going to try to copy it verbatim so there's no confusion between the city limits line and the county line. And so that, they were already in the process of doing it, so we were sort of waiting on them to get theirs done, and we were going to copy it exactly the way they did it. That way, when the dog catcher's either in Prattville or the county, the law's exactly the same. So we, I'll, I'll get to work on that immediately.
Well, I tell you, it's pretty confusing. You go and talk to the chief of police, and there's nothing he can do, and then you go down here and talk to the, the state health department, and all they can do is have the dog quarantined if he bit you. And if he, he's got to bite somebody for something to happen to him, and that's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Anyone else? Before I call on you, let's, let's finish with the dog issue, and then we'll come to Mr. Wood. Ms. Williams?
There was something that could have been done. The animal could have been killed.
Ms. Nancy, first identify yourself and give us your address.
I'm Nancy Williams. I live on that street, and I saw parts of what went on, but I also was instrumental in getting the shelter opened. I want to let you know that I've already gotten a copy of what you're talking about from your city clerk. You have that copy. I have a copy she gave me. It's dated August 29th of last year. I wish to address this situation with the dog, about this dog in my neighborhood, which occurred on May the 15th, and is still ongoing to this week, making it a month, and still it is not settled. On the 15th day of May in the early afternoon, the dog belonging to Bruce and Carol Kent, who live with Mrs. Kent's father, Mr. Gilbert Wagner, at 1370 Cooper Avenue, attacked a 16-year-old dachshund belonging to Mr. and Mrs. Pratt. As Mr. Pratt was taking the dog for a walk, the Kent dog came from nearly a block away. The Pratt dog was hurt badly, and cops had been called to the Wagner Kent home, and they were all in the yard when I noticed it. Mr. Pratt came up to me in my yard and told me what had happened. The animal warden was off that day. It was Saturday, and the cops said they could not take, take the Kent dog. There is a key to animal control truck inside the police station where the truck is parked, and a key to a lock in an outside pen for after-hours at the shelter, which was closed by that time. One of the policemen could have gotten the truck and taken the animal there. They had two cars and three men. What, what has now taken one month, two warrants for the Kent person and the dog to be picked up twice and be given back to the owner despite the fact that it has attacked two smaller animals, resulting in two court cases, could have been handled in less than an hour. The animal in question had been so abused by the owners that it probably cannot be trained not to attack smaller dogs. The dog was adopted from the shelter, and we reserve the right to reclaim the animal if this is called to our attention. I personally called it to the attention of the shelter director, and she sent out the animal control officer and asked that the animal warden call on the house and talk to them about the conditions it was in, and so did the woman who lives next door to them. She also called about the garbage, but of course, that's hearsay. According to your captain notes, there have been many areas of quite questionable things about the house and its occupants, including the elderly gentleman who lives there. There is a tree fallen on the fence during a storm several years ago, and they have not repaired it. That's where the dog can get out by itself. There are thousands of people in Prattville who love their pets and take good care of them, but it's their ultimate responsibility to make sure the animal is kept from running loose. The Code of Alabama 1975 is, is very specific on this. The dog owner must pay for any and all damages to the property of another person, that includes the other person's animals and expenses, such as Ms. Maliska. The Code of Ordinance of the City of Prattville Dogs Rabies in the Control Section, 423, covers the subject of vicious dogs, confinement of such, and rabies prevention. Quite thoroughly, it's dated May the 6th, 1997. Pets are not a laughing matter to most people, and episodes such as occurred on Cooper should be treated properly. No person should be told that if a dog bit them, the police cannot do anything about it if it kills you. Gentlemen, would you want a policeman to tell your wife that? There should be some attempt made for all court personnel and enforcement personnel to be aware of this city ordinance, and what it says, it's not that complicated. Neither is the, the Code of Alabama. I am very angry about the way this has been handled, and I will go into that further later.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Williams? Thank you, Ms. Nancy. Anyone else wish to address the city council on any issue? Mr. Wood?
My name is Stephen Wood. I live at 1652 Cantor Road, 87 Dietzville, but I own a piece of property at 204 Allenville Road, Prattville, Alabama. The reason I'm addressing the council is the house over on Allenville. I got a permit in 2007 to replace the windows and doors and the siding on the house. And while we were replacing windows and doors, I had to have the breaker box removed, so I hired an electrician to remove the breaker box. He got a permit for it, and he told me that if I didn't redo the wiring in the house, that it would burn down and kill somebody because it was so bad. So I said, okay, let's go ahead and replace the wiring. So, you know, he had the permit for the wiring, and so I had to tear the sheet rock out so he could replace the wiring. Well, then, I said, well, I'm going to go ahead and put new central heat and air in it too to make the house comfortable. My heat and air guy got a permit for that. Well, after doing this work, Mr. Wilson notified me that there's a law, a code with the flood zone regulations, that if you put over 50% of the home's value, the market value, into the home, that you have to bring it up to flood code. So he put a stop work order on the home, and after he put a stop work order on the home, I met with him to discuss the matter. Well, he put stop work order on it first, that's how I knew that I was having a problem. But anyway, I went down there and talked to him, and he was saying, well, you need to get a flood elevation certificate, you got to get an engineer to draw it up, and this and that, and I said, well, you know, I'm not spending 50% of the value of this home. You know, the home's not worth a lot because of being so small in that area. And I explained it to him, and he didn't want to listen to that, and so later I had a meeting with Mr. Duke and with Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Duke told me, get all your information together, your projected cost, and how much you've already spent, and then we'll look at it and see what, what to do. So I get all the information together, and I show, you know, a lot of stuff, I'm, I'm a home builder and a framing contractor too, so I do all the work myself that I can. So I bring the paperwork in there, and I show that I'm not spending over 50% of the value in the home, or it's got to be 50% or more. And Mr. Wilson, you know, I wrestled with him over it for a year almost, and then finally, he sends me a letter that says, well, how much would you charge somebody else to do this work? And, you know, I tell him, well, of course, it'd be more than what I'm, what it's costing me to do it myself, you know, that's my home, I own it personally. Well, you know, finally, it came down to, you know, he wasn't going to have the, you know, wasn't going to allow me to finish working on the house unless I got a flood plane elevation certificate and a no ride certificate, and the engineer dropped the plans to raise the foundation. Well, I got the plans drawn, raised the foundation. I had the engineer survey it to, you know, figure out how, how it needed to be raised up out of the flood plain, and then that's when he told, well, he may have already told me about the no ride certificate, I'm not sure, but then that's when I finally understood what the no ride certificate was. That's a big engineering document that's going to cost about $5,000 just to have the engineer draw it up. Then I'd have to spend another $5,000 raising the foundation up, then I'd have to spend the money to finish fixing the house, and after all this, I ran out of money. Well, I had several times where I was threatening legal action in letters during our correspondence, and finally, after I ran out of money, you know, a little over a year ago, maybe a little longer than that, you know, I just figured, well, I'll let the house sit till I can get some money, then I'll be able to afford to get back to work on it, do whatever I need to do. Well, I received a letter in the mail with another threat of legal action the other day, and finally, on June 15th, well, yesterday, whatever that was, I was arrested for the flood, flood plane ordinance. And, you know, I don't know what to do about the situation. I've, I've thought I've worked with Mr. Wilson every way I could. I've provided him all the information I could provide him until I ran slap out of money. And like I said, just had to let the house sit for a little while, and then next thing I know, I'm arrested. And I need some relief in the matter. I mean, I feel like with the information I gave him showing that I was spending less than 50%, and I had receipts proving it. It wasn't just my hearsay. You know, I got things on discount like the windows and stuff, but I had receipts and from Lowe's, and, you know, that he could have reasonably looked at that information and said, yes, he's spending less than 50% of the value of this home, let him get back to work on this home so he can finish it. Well, now, the house is in foreclosure. It's not completed foreclosure. I thought it was a few weeks back because I'd received a letter saying they were going to auction it off, but I talked to him about modifying a loan, and then that fell through, so it is still going through foreclosure. And I don't have any money to finish fixing the house, and I just don't know what to do. So, and Mr. Walthall, I've had to hire Mr. Walthall because I know I've got to go to court here in a few weeks, and he's given me several, some information to give everybody and plus the city attorney that's on this whole matter, and if y'all don't mind accepting it.
Not at all. If you would not mind, you can give it to Ms. Smith, and she'll make sure that we get copies of it as well.
Okay.
Also, members of the council, just so that you will know, Mr. Wood's sister and I worked together at one point. She notified me yesterday that there was this issue. I have met with Mr. Wilson, who is here. I'm not sure if the council wishes to ask any questions. If they wish to do so with Mr. Wood or with Mr. Wilson, that is fine. Just want to make sure that, that since Mr. Wood has mentioned Mr. Walthall, I'm not sure whether our city attorney wants us to say anything about it at all, but he's shaking his head no. So if, if you would, Mr. Wood, if you'll just give that information to Ms. Smith, she'll give us those copies.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Dr. Miller?
You might have said it. What is the value of the house before all of this, the work that you started?
Well, I think, I think the value, I can't remember exactly. I had to look through my notes. The last appraisal I had that Mr. Wilson looked at, the value was $35,000, and that was a lot in the land, the value, the land and the house with the value of it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wood? Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you, y'all.
Mr. Wilson, I don't know whether it's, whether it's something that you wish to, to add to that, or if you just don't say anything? Okay. We're going, we're going to move on then, and if anyone has any questions they can get with Mr. Wilson or Mr. McDowell after the meeting, and are welcome to, to get any information that you need. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the city council? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Kendrick. I live at 530 Upper Kingston Road. I'm here representing the Prattville senior citizens. We're concerned about our swimming pool. From the beginning, several of us have been on the committee, the sportsplex committee, and we have remained on the committee because we know that we do need a new pool, and the Y needs a new pool, and they're, they're wanting to merge the pool, and in a lot of ways, that's feasible, but to us, the seniors, it is not. We would prefer to stay where we are for several reasons. One reason is the proximity to the Doster Center, the Gillespie Center, and the park. The other is at the Y, the Y's membership, the city gives us free water aerobics, among a lot of other good things. But, and we feel that if, if the city pool does not remain open, and we don't really see how we can have two pools because of the expense. And downtown is so pretty, the plants and the, the trees and the baskets and the little park, the creek walk, and we feel if the, if the pool left, that would hurt the revitalization of downtown. And we have, we have signed a petition for you that, asking you to let us remain with the city, the senior program, let it remain with the city under the direction of the Department of Leisure Services. And there's a few other people here tonight. We were going to have a lot of people, but he got two, almost got me two. So that's all that I have.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Kendrick? Mr. Fink?
Just one, one comment. Drew Peterson did, I know Dean Argo, Bill Gillespie, and I, the Leisure Services Committee did meet with Drew today. We were not aware of it at the time. We saw the flyer, and we're going to have some follow-up discussions on that. I just wanted to let you know that we are aware of it.
Thank you. We, we did this in a real hurry, and I have copies for you that I'll give to her of the petition and a memo, and we just really thank you for everything that the city does for us. And the Department of Leisure Services just leans over backwards, and they really take good care of us.
Good.
And like I said, there's a few others here tonight representing the seniors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Kendrick? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the city council on any issue? Ms. Finnegan?
My name is John Lee Finnegan. I live at 211 Deer Trace. An incident occurred today that I hadn't planned on speaking to the council tonight. As you are aware, I had quit the two miles of my adopted miles, and the main reason was is the enforcement or non-enforcement of the ordinance of people putting their garbage out too early, and I was basically picking up their garbage that they had picked up. I had brought some pictures, pictures to you. Well, today, in the entrance of our subdivision, there are two homes that are rental homes, and some people have moved into the home about, the fourth house up, about two or so weeks ago. Well, I went past, passed this morning, and four bags of garbage was out. Our pickup is Monday and Thursday. So I stopped at the house on the way back, and I said, I introduced myself, and I said, I don't know if you're aware, if anybody's made you aware of when the garbage pickup is? And the gentleman said, oh, it's Monday and Friday. And I said, well, it's Monday and Thursday, and I said, I've noticed that your garbage is out, and we have a lot of stray cats, and of course, we have animals. In fact, just last week, I went to my front door, and there was a fox in my yard. So anyway, the, and then I asked him, I said, oh, are you new to the area? And he says, oh, no, I've lived in Prattville. We've just moved here. I'm asking again to please have some type of enforcement of the ordinance. It says, you know, put your garbage out by 7:00 on the day of pickup, and I can just for, and one of the bags had already been torn open, and it is not going to be picked up until Thursday if they don't take it in, which I doubt it. Again, I've brought up the house right across from the pool, scattered all the time, so I'm just asking for some type of enforcement of that ordinance so that we don't have that garbage scattered around all over the different neighborhoods.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Finnegan? Yes, ma'am, that, that is an issue. Dr. Miller?
This is for Edward. I would be interested in how many, what percent you estimate folks actually don't adhere to that law, that ordinance? Put the bags out the day before?
On a routine basis, it's probably about maybe 20% in the different neighborhoods, not all in one neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. So just average across the city, about 20% are?
Yes, sir.
Because on my circle, it's probably 90. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Finnegan. Anyone else wish to address the city council on any issue? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into our reports. I want to let everyone know that Mayor Byard and his family are not, not here this week. They're vacationing, and he wanted to let everyone know that he was thinking about us tonight, and he will certainly watch us on the internet tomorrow to see what we did tonight because he wants to make sure that we didn't do anything that, that he didn't like or that he needed to do something about. So he said, please tell everyone I'll be watching on the internet. So I've done that. Mr. Gillespie, do you have a report?
for, and one of the bags had already been torn open, and it is not going to be picked up until Thursday if they don't take it in, which I doubt it. Again, I've brought up the house right across from the pool, scattered all the time, so I'm just asking for some type of enforcement of that ordinance so that we don't have that garbage scattered around all over the different neighborhoods.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Finnegan? Yes, ma'am. That, that is an issue. Dr. Miller.
This is for Edward. I would be interested in how many, what percent you estimate folks actually don't adhere to that law, that ordinance? Put the bags out the day before?
On a routine basis, it's probably about maybe 20% in the different neighborhoods, not all in one neighborhood.
So, just average across the city, about 20% are?
Yes, sir.
Because on my circle, it's probably 90. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Finnegan.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the city council on any issue? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into our reports. I want to let everyone know that Mayor Byard and his family are not, not here this week. They're vacationing, and he wanted to let everyone know that he was thinking about us tonight, and he will certainly watch us on the Internet tomorrow to see what we did tonight, because he wants to make sure that we didn't do anything that, that he didn't like, or that he needed to do something about. So, he said, please tell everyone I'll be watching on the Internet. So, I've done that. Mr. Gillespie, do you have a report?
No, sir, but I would like for us to recognize Donnie McBrayer, the new 911 director, and if you wouldn't be putting him on the spot, ask him to come up to the podium and give us a little speech.
Thank you, Councilman Gillespie. Mr. President, gentlemen, thank you for recognizing me tonight. I appreciate it. Most of all, I really appreciate the support we get from the City of Prattville for the 911 Center. We have an outstanding group of people up there, working together as a team. They're a critical element in the, in our public safety and protecting the citizens of Prattville and Togga County. I started here as a firefighter, paramedic in 1973, and went off, served the military, came back and retired, so this is a great opportunity for me to give back to this community that, that is responsible, I think, for any success that I've had. We have the finest police department, fire department, EMS in the state of Alabama. We always have. And our vision at the E-911 Center is to become the best emergency 911 communication center in the state of Alabama, because our first responders and our police officers in the city of Prattville and the Togga County, they deserve that, and we're confident we're going to get there if we can all work together as a team, which in my first two weeks here, I've seen nothing but teamwork out of the city, out of the IT support we get from the city, from the police department, from the fire department, from the planning commission. It's been a team effort so far, and if we continue to work like that as a team, there's no way we can fail. So, I appreciate it, and I appreciate your support, and I look forward to working with you.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. McBrayer? Mr. Gillespie.
Not necessarily a comment for him, but I want to thank Mrs. Thrash for helping Mr. Magoo and Carl Johnson and Rocky Milliman for hard work they did coming up and picking him. I think he was the best, best choice for the job, and I know Mrs. Thrash has really, really worked close with 911, trying to keep us in line. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Donnie, welcome. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Anything else, Mr. Gillespie? Mr. Wood?
No.
Dr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Renninger?
No.
Mr. Bowles?
Mr. Fank?
Just one thing to follow up. The, the meeting that we had today, it was kind of an ad hoc meeting that Drew called, and I appreciate him. Most of us, just to, to follow up, most of us got a photograph, I guess, about a, an issue that we have, a small piece of coping concrete that came off at the, at the city pool. Drew's worked on that. There's a solution. English Pool is going to be here, I believe, tomorrow, Friday, sorry. The heat got to me as well today out there. So, they'll be here Friday to fix that. We've got it. We've got it basically, a stopgap measure fixed for it right now, so there is no, there is no threat to safety, and the pool is open, and swim, swim, swim. I almost jumped in today myself.
Thank you, Mr. Fank. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we have seven items on our agenda this evening. Resolution number one is to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67, Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. This was the subject of the public hearing that we held prior to this meeting, where anyone who wished to do so had an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition to that. Members of the council, is there anything further on resolution number one? All in favor of adopting resolution number one will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number one is adopted. Resolution number two is to set a public hearing to rezone Old Ridge Road, a portion of Old Ridge Road from R2 to R3 and R5. Mr. Gillespie, would you please introduce resolution number two?
Yes, sir. Whereas Garden Park LLC is the owner of the property described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, where its property to be rezoned is located on the west side of Old Ridge Road, north of River Chase North, whereas the property is currently zoned R2 Single Family Residential, and the petition is to have the property rezoned to R3 Single Family Residential and R5 Patio Garden Homes. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on March 18th, 2010, whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning of said property be amended as described in Attachment A from R2 to R3 and R5. Be therefore resolved by the City Council of City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for July 20th, 2010, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. Gillespie has moved resolution number two, setting a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fank. Any discussion on the resolution setting a public hearing? All in favor of that resolution will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Gillespie, would you please introduce the proposed ordinance?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the zoning ordinance the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10th, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May 1987, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and display in Attachment B from R2 Single Family Residential to R3 Single Family Residential and R5 Patio Garden Homes. That this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville shall at its public hearing on the 20th day of July 2010 at 6:00 p.m., consider said proposed ordinance, and at such time and place, all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, not here and specifically amended, shall remain in full force and effect. Amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March 18th, 2010. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and execution as provided by law. Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. Gillespie has moved the ordinance portion of resolution number two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wood. By point of order, this ordinance will be held until the public hearing is held on July the 20th. Resolution number three is to reappoint Jane Taylor to the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority. Mr. Fank, would you please introduce resolution number three?
Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority Board of Directors due to the term expiration of Jane Taylor, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, be it therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Jane Taylor is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on April 1st, 2015, or until her successor is duly qualified and appointed. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Fank has moved resolution number three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gillespie. Any discussion on resolution number three? All in favor of resolution number three will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number three is adopted. Ordinance number four is to declare property located on Easy Street as surplus. Mr. Wood, would you please introduce ordinance number four?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, as follows, that the property described below is hereby declared surplus of the City of Prattville. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the property shall be deeded to Ethel Stadamai upon receipt from her of the fair market value, and that the mayor is hereby authorized, empowered, and instructed to execute a deed conveying said property from the City of Prattville to Ethel Stadamai. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Wood has moved ordinance number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gillespie. By point of order, this ordinance will be held for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Renninger, seconded by Mr. Gillespie. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. The rules are suspended, and the ordinance is now before us. Is there anything further on ordinance number four? Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to give an explanation to those that I hadn't talked to personally, but I think I've talked to most of you. I've talked to the mayor. He's aware of this. Drew is aware of. What we have is a small sitting park on Easy Street that mainly was used as a drainage way, but now we have an opportunity with Miss Stadamai purchasing property next to it to make better living conditions over there by building a home, and I, I just hope the council will move forward with this. We tried to do it several years ago, and the property owners wouldn't sell, but now she's been able to purchase, so we want to move forward with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there anything further on ordinance number four? All in favor of ordinance number four will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Ordinance number four is adopted. Resolution number five is to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67, Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Dr. Miller, would you please introduce resolution number five?
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes, and other vermin, and whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds bearing wingy or downy seeds, when mature, may cause the spread of weeds, and whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds may also hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard, and whereas Section 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance, and whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, 401 Marlet Drive, 108 Overlook Drive, 820 Dunvegan, Dunvegan Drive, 742 Cranbrook Drive, 203 J Street, 205 J Street, 311 Summer Hill, 312 Marlet, 311 Marlet, vacant lot next to 150 10th Street. Be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses are a public nuisance. Be it further resolved that the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Togga County Revenue Commissioner, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. Be it further resolved that the owners of said property are, are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on July 20th, 2010, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Dr. Miller has moved resolution number five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fank. Any discussion on resolution number five? Mr. Fank?
I just want to compliment Dr. Miller. I think the last time he read that, he got so cracked up with the wingy and downy that that ordinance got, or resolution got moved to me after that, and so I've been reading it for the last couple of years. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I have been practicing.
Thank you both. Anything further on resolution number five? All in favor of resolution number five will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number five is adopted. Ordinance number six is to petition for annexation of 320 County Road 4 East, 1026 Spring Street, 1030 Spring Street, 1042 Spring Street, and 1050 Spring Street. Mr. Wood, would you please introduce ordinance number six?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the City of Prattville is a city with a population of over 6,000 inhabitants located in the state of Alabama, and that it has been presented by petition by all owners of property located and contained which are contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Prattville as they are now situated, and that the property described in the petition sought to be annexed is as described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, and that said property does lie within the corporate limits of any other municipality, and that all owners, as defined by 11-42-20 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, have executed said petition requesting the property be annexed into the City of Prattville, and that the City of Prattville finds that it is to the best interest of the City of Prattville and its inhabitants to annex said property, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that the petition has met all requirements of Title 11-42-20 through 11-42-23 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the corporate limits of the City of Prattville be extended and rearranged so as to embrace and include the following property as described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, and that which property shall become a part of the corporate area of Prattville, Alabama, upon passage and publication of this, this ordinance as required by law. Be it further ordained that the extension of sewer lines in the new annex area shall not be provided until such time as it becomes economically feasible for the city to provide same. Be it further ordained that a copy of the petition be filed in the office of the Judge of Probate of the Togga County, Alabama, and that this ordinance be published in the Prattville Progress of the Togga County, Alabama. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Wood has moved ordinance number six. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowles. Members of the council, this is an ordinance, and by point of order, it will be held for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Renninger to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gillespie. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. The rules are suspended, and the ordinance is before us. Is there anything further on ordinance number six? Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think most of you are aware, if you didn't receive an email from George, just a little more background on this. This has been before us probably for 10 or 15 years. This is an area down in Spring Hill, and it's really a nightmare, because part of the streets are in the city. If you go one, two, three steps, then it's in the county. And we're not only dealing with Spring Street, this particular ordinance deals with Spring Street, but hopefully in the near future, we'll, we'll get Abe Court and Hill Street because they're all in the same situation. So, I ask that you move forward and look forward to the planning department moving forward to get Abe Court and Hill Street so that, that public safety nightmare can be corrected. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anything further on ordinance number six? All in favor of ordinance number six will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Ordinance number six is adopted. Resolution number seven is to express support for Project Fire. Mr. Renninger, would you please introduce resolution number seven?
Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville works through and with the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee to attract economic development, and whereas the chamber's economic development committee, when necessary, calculates reviews and offers incentives and other assistance to businesses who are interested in locating within the city of Prattville, and whereas, for the purpose of economic development in the city of Prattville, the team has met and recommends that the city of Prattville surplus, surplus up to 35 acres at the South Industrial Park to the Industrial Development Board for Project Fire. Be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville supports Project Fire and agrees to surplus up to 35 acres to the Industrial Development Board for use by Project Fire at such time that the project site has been defined and a survey completed. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Renninger has moved resolution number seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fank. Any discussion on resolution number seven? All in favor of resolution number seven will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number seven is adopted. Mr. Gillespie, do you have anything further?
No.
Mr. Wood?[1684.62] Mr. Wood?
No.
Dr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Renninger?
No.
Mr. Bowles?
No.
Mr. Fank? Members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen, I've been asked by our special events coordinator to remind you that even though it's a little warm outside, that this Friday evening in